Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting of the enlarged city school district of Middletown. I call a meeting to order at this time and ask you, I'm sorry, ask you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance given by Mr. Gomez. Can we continue standing after Mr. Gomez for a moment of silence, please?
Do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in the living and in the dead.
Thank you, President Williams. We haven't been here for about a month.
Okay, I thank President Williams. We haven't been here for around a month, and we've been here pretty hard with members of our educational family passing. The first moment of silence is for Ted Klein. And Ted Klein, the husband of Lisa Klein, Lisa Klein worked for many years, over twenty years, in the special ed department. And Ted, if I may read this, Ted loved working, traveling, and meeting customers who all became his friends. He was the most honest and honorable person one could hope to meet. His word was his bond, and you really can't say anything better about a person than that. Mark R. Kilcoin. Mark Kilcoin, the brother of Bill Kilcoin, and Bill Kilcoin is a hard-working member of our Buildings and Grounds Department. Mark was also known to be very, very hardworking. He worked for Garnet Medical Center. For thirty-seven years, he never missed one day of work. During the pandemic, he received an award for his assistance in the pandemic helping individuals. He was an avid fisherman. He liked ice fishing, and he also did a number of things for his community. Winnie Marlett taught for over twenty-five years as an elementary teacher, beginning her career Albert Street School in nineteen sixty-four. My mother taught at Albert Street, and she spoke very highly of Mrs. Marlett. I served on curriculum committees with Winnie, and she was very dedicated. She was not a clock watcher. Students respected and loved her, as did other members of the faculty. Interestingly enough, she loved knitting and often knitted items for fellow staff members and for members and for her students. The next moment of silence, Michael Quigley, instructor of mathematics at MHS for almost thirty years, very active in district affairs, served on various curriculum committees, and also as president of the MTA. Mike was always very plainspoken, spoke right to the point, and he was a huge supporter of our instructional staff. Art Gage, member of the MHS PE Department, Physic Education Department, Coaching Department for almost thirty years. He coached both football and wrestling, again, respected by both staff and students, very forthright individual, firm but fair. You know, Art, and I knew Art, he positively influenced the life of many, many young people. Very rugged individual. He was known for wrestling all members of his wrestling team at the same time. I talked to one of the wrestlers on his team, Tracy Soltero, who's a Middletown resident and a owner of a business in Middletown. His statement was, Art was some kind of individual. He was one of a kind. Today, Bishop Williams, who unfortunately had to catch a fly out this evening on a medical emergency, on an emergency of one of his family members, he conducted an outstanding service for Jessica Jackson. Her daughter Kyra is a student at MHS. I did not know Mrs. Jackson, although I had a number of the members of the Jackson family when I was on staff, students. Judging by the number of family and friends and supporters in the audience, she was very well-respected. And as a number of people stated, she was a giving, loving, caring person who would help anyone in need. The last moment of silence this evening is for Camille, Adama's brother, Martin, who we found out today passed away, and that is why Camille is not here this evening. If she so desires, I would do a more lengthy, do a more lengthy moment of silence at the next meeting, but please remember all these individuals and their thoughts and prayers. They served the district, or they were spouses of someone who served the district for many, many years. Thank you.
Mike? Thank you, Mr. Perino. May I ask Mrs. Houston to do the admission statement, please?
Certainly. We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to become competitive, to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, Mrs. Houston. Roll call.
Mrs. Blumenau, Mr. Cresenzzo.
Here.
Mr. Gomez.
Here.
Mrs. Houston.
Here.
Mr. Perino.
Here.
Mr. Tobiason. Mr. Freddie Williams.
Here.
Pastor Williams. Mr. Mitchell Williams.
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes approval personnel-only meeting as presented?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll be abstaining because I was absent.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're moving on to administrative, but there's, right? Nothing presented for administrative. Moving on. May I have a motion to approve the Instructional Personnel Memorandum thirteen B, number one, due sixteen, as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I just want to say that I'm very pleased that one of my former fifth graders is going to become a permanent member of our school district, and so pleased and proud of her and her many accomplishments, and I know that she's going to make amazing contributions to the school district. Thank you.
That's so cool. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Non-instructional. May I have a motion to approve the Non-Instructional Personnel Memorandum thirteen C, number one through eleven, as presented?
So moved.
Have a second?
I'm sorry.
Was there two?
Twelve.
Excuse me?
One through twelve. I apologize.
Okay, one through twelve. Okay.
So moved.
Do you have a second? All right, yeah, okay. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to say a word about one of the members of our non-instructional staff that is retiring, Pete Wilcox, will be retiring as of February second, I believe. I worked with Pete. Pete served the district for probably only over thirty years, as the Assistant Superintendent of Buildings and Grounds. Pete knew as much as anyone, and maybe more so, about the facilities. If he wanted to know where a pipe was, Pete could point that out, or electrical box, he knew where that was. Very diligent in his work, again, a hard-working member of that department, so he will most definitely be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval Financial Memorandum thirteen D, number one. May I have a motion to approve the Financial Memorandum thirteen D, number one through eight, as presented?
Second on that.
Any discussion?
Yes. Okay, so for the second item, I will be voting no. I think that there's been enough discussion about that in past weeks. I see a lot on the internet. As far as number three, I do have some comments. I did my homework, and I'll say this, sometimes a name or a title can seem pretty and positive until we scratch beneath the surface. When we scratch a bit of new paint off, sometimes what is revealed may be something old and rusty, which does not work. Our school district touts the phrase "it takes a village." I feel this is an incomplete sentence that I would like to suggest an ending for. It takes a village to support the families or a family, depending on the situation. So we need programs that will bridge unity between children and their families, and sometimes educational programs can do the opposite or become a hindrance of this, and can be one-sided politically or motivated from one side of politics, which is why I will be voting no on item number three, and that's all I have for this. You're welcome.
Question?
More discussion, okay.
Mrs. Houston, this was presented as one vote, so I don't know how you can vote no on pieces of it.
No, I was told by you, actually, at a previous board session, that if a member, why don't we go to the parliamentarian, that if we have some that we want to vote for, item A, and let's say, or one and two, but the other ones you don't want to, I can say I want to vote no on just two and three.
I'll reply to that, Miss Houston.
Can you do that?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Stand corrected, thank you.
In our minutes, in our minutes, Mr. Cresenzzo, in our minutes, I do note if a board member wants to vote no on a specific item, even if it passes.
So how is that recorded in the minutes?
I record it in the minutes, in the notes, in the comments of the action item.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Houston. Is there any more discussion? Regarding this, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye on items one, four, five, seven, and eight, no on two and three.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Kevin. Repeat that.
Mr. Gomez, you want to repeat?
You had your.
I'm going to vote nay, two and three, but I'm going to vote in full support, one, four, and seven. Is there a five and six? And five and six, too, yeah, okay. Eight, I am sorry, yes.
I believe with the vote, the motion still passes. Yep. Motion passes. Moving forward.
Okay.
I won't skip anything. May I have a motion to approve the Special Services Memorandum thirteen E, numbers one through two, as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the change orders thirteen F, numbers one through two, as presented?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Would we be able to ask Mr. Bartlett just to explain briefly what this is for the public?
Yeah, sure, Bill, can you come up?
Yeah, yes, we have two change orders tonight. Both of them are in relation to the partial roof replacement at the Maple Hill Annex at Truman Moon. The first is to provide mechanical roof penetrations and support curves for the replacement AC units for the walk-in coolers and freezers at Truman Moon. And the second is a substantial change order credit for unused roof decking allowance. The expectation was, is we didn't really know the conditions of all that roof, and we had provided, built in an allowance, and we didn't need it. The roof decking was in good shape.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. In regards to this, yeah, any other discussion, further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're moving on to Board Member Recognizations and Community Updates. We can go around. You want to start with Mr. Mitchell Williams?
Do you want to start with tenure?
Tenure.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yep, this is, okay. Yep. I'm sorry, tenure recognitions. Mrs. Creedon?
Thank you, thank you. Tonight, we are excited to be able to be here to celebrate a really monumental part of any educator's career, tenure, and so joining us this evening is Mrs. Tracy Sorrentino, who will be speaking about her tenure recognition at Maple Hill Annex at Truman Moon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Creedon, members of the board. I'll stand back. I do the same thing at school every day during the announcements. Colleen, I am here to proudly present Mrs. Colleen Herco for tenure. Colleen is an amazing special educator. She has one of our most lively and vivacious and warm classrooms in our kindergarten and first grade. She greets every student every day warmly. She keeps that room busy in terms of her stations, her use of digital content, even with our kindergarten classes, is truly outstanding. She advocates, she motivates her learners, and she is a delight to work with. Congratulations, Colleen.
Thank you. And she's here with her beautiful family, I see over there, and we'll get some pictures of you guys after we do the next one. And then I have the high school team here, who will be recognizing just the tenure accomplishment for their educator.
Good evening and greetings. I'm Dr. Williams, and on behalf of the Middletown High School and Mr. Donahue, our Associate Principal, we are proud to recognize Ms. Sarah McKenna this evening. Ms. McKenna currently teaches studio art to scholars at Middletown High School. She has a strong knowledge base in the traditional arts as well as the digital arts. She personalizes instruction, she differentiates instructions for her scholars, and she sets academic goals that yield high achievement. She is knowledgeable about the fine arts, and she excites her scholars about the fine arts as well. Ms. McKenna also supports scholars beyond the classroom. She participated with the National Arts Society during the Ukraine tragedies to bring acknowledgement and awareness of what was going on there. She also participates in our Experience Our Programs event, and prior to the pandemic, she was co-advisor for the National Arts Society. She supports our Breakfast for Champions. She's a member of the New York State Art Teachers Association, and she demonstrates creativity, enthusiasm, and passion for teaching and learning. If you walk through the hallways of our building, you will see lots of artwork designed by Mrs. McKenna, because she has demonstrations of what she does on our bulletin boards, and she is an avid member of our school community. So we are very proud to acknowledge Ms. McKenna, who was unable to be here this evening, but we look forward to her continued success here at Middletown High School. Thank you.
Now we're going to go to community updates, and I'll go back to Mitchell Williams. We're going to go back to it. Yep.
Happy New Year, everyone. I'm just very excited about this new year and the different things that has been going on in the community, just how everybody has been coming together, as well as with the school, with the different programs in the community, there's too many for me to even name, as well as the work that the schools are doing, as far as the administrators, the educators, the security staff, the grounds, just everybody just doing a wonderful job, very exciting. I just want some clarity as far as what "it takes a village," I need it to be understood that "it takes a village" is something that us in the community have come up with as far as to call ourselves a village, so it's not something that is so much a school thing. I'm just happen to be, I'm a community member that's a board member, but there's a lot of things that I do in the community that's not as a board member, but I'm a community, a board member, if that makes sense. Like I have different things that I engage in as far as in support of the community, as well as Freddie Williams and Mr. Perino and John Williams, been a few of us. So that's what "it takes a village" is. This is something that was taught to me from, as a child, as to look at my community as a village, and we take care of each other. Now, the school district is a part of that village, as well as the barber shop, as well as the different organizations, the Parks and Recs, the YMCA, all the parents and all the students, and this is how we look at it. So I just wanted to make that clear, as far as when I say "it takes a village," that's how I see it. All right? Have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I want to bounce over to Mr. Vince Cresenzzo.
I really don't have anything new and compelling, but I just wish everybody a happy New Year. It's been a long time since we sat here. We had a board retreat planned, but the presenter unfortunately got sick and we had to cancel it. So I'm glad to be back. Got a lot of good things going on. Just another few weeks and the school year will be half over. That's very, very hard to believe. And so I wish everybody a healthy and happy and safe New Year, and very productive New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cresenzzo. Moving on to Mrs. Houston?
Thank you, Vice President Williams. He said president, though, was there something? Acting president, okay. I didn't know if there was something transpired while I was absent. No, I didn't think that. But, well, first of all, and I'll try to say this calmly, without crying, I want to thank the community for all of the heartfelt prayers and compassionate gestures that lifted my family up during a difficult time of loss during my absences at the last couple of meetings. My family lost quite a few members since the beginning of November, and I lost a close personal friend, but the worst was on Christmas Eve when my godmother passed away. I was very close to her. So thank you to all of the people in the community who were so kind with their words, their prayers, and just lifting my family up. It meant a great deal to me. Getting on to something more positive, I did participate in the Town of Walch Hill Holiday Parade, and I want to honor our cadets because they stood out in the cold and the pouring rain during, it was one of those icy cold rainstorms that was tough, but they were troopers, they didn't complain, they stood so orderly and nicely while they were waiting for things to begin. I was there participating, actually, in another activity that I do in the community that I represent, but while we started marching, the most beautiful rainbow appeared, so there you go. Also, just a few weeks ago, Mr. Gomez and his family, two of his kids are here tonight, and I had the honor of attending the Town of Walch Hills' first annual Kwanzaa celebration hosted by Executive George Serrano and Bishop James Rollins, who had just come back from Africa, and it was a really, really beautiful evening, and it was well-attended. Kwanzaa is a nonreligious, a nonpolitical celebration. It had been rescheduled onto December thirtieth because of weather, and it was of unity, family, and community, and African-American as well as African culture through seven principles, and our community came together to celebrate through music, poetry, dancing, laughter, and sharing wisdom, which I was really, really, really delighted with. And if anyone would like to view the videos and pictures that I took, you can find them on my Facebook page, which is public. Well, thank you, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Houston, and sorry for your losses.
Thank you.
Moving on to Mr... Going to pause for a minute.
Yes.
Moving on to Mr. Perino. How can I figure it out?
Thank you, and then you, yeah, that's good. Thank you, President Williams. The first thing I'd like to do is to recognize one of our high school students, a student who is on the wrestling team, and a student whose mom is one of our colleagues, Crystal Monchere, and so I'm going to recognize Stefan Monchere, who became Middletown's first-ever champion, first ever, at the prestigious Eastern State Classic Wrestling Tournament. Now, there were wrestlers there from Maine, Rhode Island, Connecticut, Massachusetts, New Jersey, Virginia, and Pennsylvania, and the event was held in Sullivan County Community College. Now, Stefan wrestles as a heavyweight in the two-hundred-and-eighty-five-pound weight class. He went four-four, four to zero on the weekend, three victories coming by pins. His opponent in the finals was a returning New York State two-hundred-and-eighty-five-pound qualifier and the state's top-ranked wrestler. So Stefan's going to take over that ranking after this performance. He'll be number one. Now, he's only a junior. He has one-hundred-and-thirty-two career wins for all times and has eighty-nine career pins, second of all times. So it was a great team, and other members of the team, I understand it very well at those meets, so congratulations to Stefan and congratulations to his coach. And also, we'll be talking about that maybe later on down the road, the wrestling team. The other thing, and I don't know how much time I have, I don't want to go over my four minutes, I want to speak about for a moment Dr. Martin Luther King's celebration in the district. The Emily Landergan in the Hughes Chairs and Media Center, she took the lead in this, and let me just give you some examples of what went on and what's going on. Various displays at Presidential Park on Martin Luther King, and also that's going into January, into the month of February, with Black History Month coming up. And the staff has additional lessons planned. The second floor of the Presidential Park Library will be focusing on read-alouds, which is good. which is good, and also there will be various conversations concerning the civil rights movement and the way that we can improve, we can improve equality for everyone. Carter, they did a little bit, something different this year. Fifth graders are reading classroom plays and aloud, and aloud books together. The book Take a Quick Bow by Mr. Mark, Pamela Marks, contains many, many short plays for students to read, and they were, they were doing that along with displays. The high school had a number of displays in the library, black authors, and you can look around, quotes from prominent black men and women, and they are working very closely with the English department on a number of projects. Likewise, Maple Hill, the students had a number of biographies to read, they had a number of puzzles related to the civil rights movement, they studied a number of databases, and so on. So again, the district, I believe, did a good job in that. I remember before we had the Martin Luther King Holiday, and what we did is the whole day, we discussed civil rights, we discussed civil rights leaders. It was quite the, quite the thing back then. We showed films, we showed film strips, no computers at the time, but, so again, we're taking a leadership role in this Middletown School District in recognizing the greatest, the greatest civil rights leader ever to live. So I think I've gone on my time, and President Williams?
I just wanted to acknowledge Stefan also. Mr. Perrino said it well, he stole my thunder with that one. And I also wanted to acknowledge our local community college, ACH, is doing an amazing job this year. Their basketball team, from what I understand, was ranked number two a couple days ago, then, you know, politics got involved, and now they're number four, but they're still nationally ranked, and that's big for our city of Middletown. And just want to, you know, acknowledge the great job the district is going in, coattailing Mr. Mitchell Williams' administrative security, janitorial buildings and grounds. We're going in a real great direction. I joined the Board of Ed in the year 2020, which was a kind of a roller coaster of sorts, and from then till now, I just watched the district grow, and I watched the kids grow and programs grow, and I'm really excited to be a part of this. And those are my words for now, and we're gonna circle back to the Elks Student of the Month. Oh, Mr. Gomez, I skipped you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take this opportunity, since this is our first board meeting that we're back on since December, a shout-out to all our wonderful students that participated in the holiday concerts. I was able to attend, I believe, two, and then there were others I looked on on MIDI TV. In case you missed them, you could still look at them on MIDI TV or the school district website. And I will say, all our children from elementary through high school were amazing, and it's good to note that our school district has one of the, stands out statewide for our fine arts program. So a great shout-out to all our students, our participants, and the wonderful, amazing instructors that help bring these concerts and make our holiday season special, and they really brought beautiful Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa music to life, and it was really wonderful hearing it, and I look forward to it every year.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. At this moment, I just want to retract and go back to the financial memorandum. There was an error. So may I have a motion to approve the Financial Memorandum 13D, numbers one through eight, as presented?
Show move.
Any discussion?
Oh, go ahead.
That vote we took originally, I think there was one of them, I think two, I was gonna vote yea, but the other ones I voted no, stay no.
Right.
I believe, yeah, okay.
Same for me. I vote no on number two and number three. All the rest, I vote yes.
Well, so we, there was no discussion, so all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, any opposed?
With the exceptions.
Okay, yep.
And ditto that.
Okay. I believe the motion still passes? Yes, and now we're gonna go to, back to the Elks Student of the Month, Mr. Perrino?
Thank you, President Williams. Could members of the Elks Club approach, and could our Elks Student of the Month approach? Along with her instructional leader, her house principal? Okay, good.
Mrs. Schreiner, Mr. Fatto?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us, and thank you to the Elks Club. So the 22 cohort team would like to recognize scholar Yessenia Ortiz for displaying excellent character and leadership skills. Yessenia has demonstrated a commitment to her academic success at Middletown High School and worked diligently to improve her academic standing this past semester. Yessenia is a remarkable leader and a kind-natured young lady who always brightens your day. I know that because I've known her for four years now. Yessenia consistently portrays an upbeat, pleasant demeanor, whether she is speaking to staff members or her peers. We look forward to continuing to watch Yessenia grow and strive for academic excellence over the next four years.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm good.
All right. So Yessenia, on behalf of the Middletown Elks Club, we are pleased to present you with our Certificate for Student of the Month. It's lovely to meet you and hear about all of your fantastic accomplishments.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, nice job. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perrino.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
If I could get a picture of everyone?
Let's get a, let's get a photo of everyone. Before the members of the Elks leave us, I'd like to say that the next event will be the Elks Pancake Breakfast, February 5th, I believe.
It's the first Sunday of February.
Okay, I think that's it. Five. And a lot of the money gets plowed right back into the community for activities such as this, so please attempt to make it, 8 to noon, and you'll see our NJOCC students in action there. They'll be, they'll be helping, they do a great job. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Perrino. Moving on to opportunity to address the board. Public participants are limited to four minutes per speaker. An individual is not permitted to give their time to another individual. Would anybody like to address the board? Moving on, there are no letters received. Oh, we do have one. Sorry.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year to all.
Happy New Year.
Okay. Before I read what I have, this is my second time, you know, standing here, and I was talking, you know, to my husband earlier, and we were discussing how blessed this place is and what an awesome environment it is. And it always depends on how we look at things. We can look at it in the positive or we can look at it in the negative, and I choose to see the positive in everything. I was thinking the other day that life is full of ups and downs, you know? You can have an array of emotions all day, you know, you get good news over here, and the next thing you know, something else happened over there. I just had a situation that happened to me yesterday. I was on my phone, taking care of business, dealing with something that's going on at home with the house, and I get a text from my neighbor saying, oh, I'm so sorry about what happened, you know, to your tree or something like that. I had no idea that this huge tree had fallen into her yard, and the thing that hit me was, so is life. One minute, something good is happening, the other minute, something bad may be happening, but if we always choose to take the good and always focus on the good things that are happening, we are able to get over the hump of all the bad things that's happening around us. So I choose to see Middletown School as an amazing place. I choose to see Middletown School as an awesome place for children to be. I just love schools. So this is what I have in my letter. I don't know if this is the right place to present this because my kids have graduated for years and they have gone on, so I don't know if this is the right place, but this is what I have. Dear Miss Greeden and school board members, I am Deborah Atkinson, and I have been a resident of Middletown, New York for over 30 years. My two biological children and a few of my foster children attended Middletown Schools and are doing substantially well. I enjoy working with children and young adults because I believe it is my calling. I want to get involved with the schools and help to enhance the excellent, the excellent programs already in place. Some of the ideas I want to present are to start a parent group. This group will consist of adults willing to present, to be present at the school when the students arrive in the morning and when they go home in the afternoon. This group will greet and cheer the students. Also, to have a grandparent group, these grandparents will do the same as the above group, but will also serve to talk with students who may, who may be having a rough day or a meltdown. Also, starting a school thrift store and a supply closet to benefit kids whose parents can't afford these items. Lastly, soliciting local stylish and barbers willing to offer free haircuts to students whose parents cannot afford it. The ultimate goal is to remove every barrier that will deter a child from having a great school experience. Thank you for your time and consideration. And that's it.
Thank you so much. Great ideas. I know myself personally, I could check one of those boxes, owning a barber shop for the free haircuts. So your husband is, he's known me through that for years. So definitely, great words, we appreciate you. Thank you so much. And I believe there are no letters that were put forward. And now we're moving on to the superintendent updates.
Great, thanks. We're gonna get to our long-range financial planning with Mr. Smith. He's here this evening, but before we get to that, I just want to do some updates and some high-level information sharing, just in case you've missed it, and some of our other locations. So I'm just calling out for families at both of our middle schools, Twin Towers and Monhegan Middle School, that we are currently in the final planning stages of some calendar shifts for the month of June, and that will be so that we can support our capital project at Twin Towers Middle School in terms of timing. There'll be tons of information sharing and opportunities for families to meet with administration to understand more about it, but I just want to put it on people's radars. We are still collaborating with our partners, which includes our educators, administrators, and community to make sure that we get it right, so it's not final yet, but we are working on that. If I could have just the few slides that pop up. So we have been working over the past months in the next steps in our journey to become a phone-free academic-focused space, and so we are at the point now with our nine-through-twelve scholars that we are going to be supporting a phone-free environment through the implementation of the Yonder device. And so I have the device here, you can just pop to the next slide for me. I have the device here, and I first want to thank all those members of our community. We have had great turnout at our sessions. We've done four sessions so far. We did two in December and two in January. We seem to get a bit more participation in our virtual sessions, so we're gonna continue to populate with a few more virtual sessions, but there were some folks that came to an in-person session, and I didn't have the unit on hand to be able to display it, so I wanted to bring it tonight and just sort of put it up so that the camera could see it, that this is the proprietary magnet that is the unlocking base, and this is the neoprene case that nine-through-twelve scholars, cellphones, and wireless earbuds will go into. So if you look up at the screen here, it speaks for itself. Research shows that the mere presence of cellphones in our classrooms can be detrimental to academic performance. There are tons of opportunities to dig into research and information sharing from educators across the nation that talk about what we are seeing inside classrooms. We're seeing increased reports of our young people sleeping less or having interrupted sleep, which impacts their academic day. We're seeing an uptick in the diagnosis and treatment of teenagers with stress, anxiety, depression, sadness, feeling lonely, and we're also seeing young people who are just generally more disengaged as a result of their compulsive cellphone use. Next slide, please. Right now, Yonder is being used across school districts across New York State, as well as across the country, hundreds and hundreds of classrooms. It's being used at concerts, comedy shows. Some individuals are asking wedding guests or special guests, special event guests to put their phones in Yonder pouches. Governmental agencies are using them, private companies. They're becoming more popular at spaces. The goal of our impact on our high school is so that we can encourage an academic-focused environment where we're addressing their social, emotional well-being, as well as the academic component. So this slide sort of just gives you another look at, you know, what the Yonder team, who has been serving their current school partners, what folks are saying. You can go to the next slide, please. Tonight, information sharing is at a very high level because we really want to engage in two-way discussion with our families. So we are beginning the Yonder implementation on Tuesday, February 28th. It's just after the winter break, and so I want families to pay attention to that date because there will be a modified schedule for high school scholars only, so that we can support information sharing and distribution of the neoprene pouches, and information on that modified schedule will be available on our website, on our district Facebook page, on the high school page, as well as we'll go out through the daily announcements at the high school, so just be on the lookout. Next slide, please. So just in terms of a high-level implementation basics, every scholar will be assigned one of these pouches, right? And their wireless earbuds and their cellphone will go into this pouch. At the very top of the pouch is a magnet closure. Um, at the very top of the pouch is a magnet closure, a pin-and-magnet closure, right? So it is locked right now, and if you utilize this base here, it unlocks the top of the case, and then the case is open to place your phone in it. So every scholar is being, um, given their own Yonder pouch, right? Um, scholars will be responsible for bringing the pouch back and forth, um, from home to school and school to home, um, each day. It will not be something that they turn in at the end of the day because we recognize that there could be concerns about, um, you know, just, um, keeping germs and, you know, having a student, um, have their own. So each student will get their own. Um, during our sessions, we provide all sorts of implementation details around what, um, if you go to the next slide, what arrival will look like, um, when they pop into the building. If you go to the next slide, please. Um, what arrival will look like. Students will essentially walk in, they will demonstrate that they put their phone into the pouch and close it, or will demonstrate that their phone is in the pouch already in the locked position. Um, and then they will continue to go through, um, and begin their day. And then at the end of the day, these, um, magnets will be placed throughout the school, um, at, um, exits, um, entrances, um, so that there'll be ease of implementation, release of the magnet, so that they again have access to their phone at the conclusion of the day. Um, we've also provided for safe spaces for our young people, so that in locations like cohort offices, the executive principal's office, the associate principal's offices, the nurse's office, counseling offices, um, the athletic department, they will all have the ability to, um, support a young person with unlocking their Yonder pouch, so that they can, um, gain access to their phone. So if at any time a young person needs to make a call to a parent guardian or caregiver, they just have to go to a cohort office and they'll be given an opportunity to unlock their device, make that phone call, and then the device would be locked again. Um, so this just, again, this visual here just sort of shows you, um, a little bit about the three-step process. If you could go to the next slide for me, please? Um, so again, we've seen, um, a lot of great participation from our families. I wanna thank again all those families who have joined us at the multiple sessions. It's been wonderful to, um, hear the questions you're asking, so that we're making sure we're providing you with the information you need. Um, we have an upcoming session next week, January twenty-fifth, which is a Wednesday. It'll be a virtual session again. It'll be at six P.M. And information on that, um, login link will be available on our website and our Facebook page, and the high school is also ready to send it out next week via their, um, messaging system. We also created a unique email address, so this way, if individuals wanna submit specific questions, um, they can do that. And if we see questions come up that, um, are trending, we'll go ahead and add those to our FAQ document and make those available, um, to families and scholars. So the email address is simple. It's yonder, Y-O-N-D-R, at E-C-S-D-M dot org. Um, and I just want to, um, thank the board for their, um, support as we move forward in this. Um, we are excited to be able to use, um, some of the federal American Rescue Funds to support, um, the purchase and implementation, um, of this program. And I'm saying that because I wanted to clarify that, um, for families that were with us on, um, virtual or in-person sessions up to this point. So it is no longer coming from the general fund as a supply line item. It is coming from our learning loss, um, grant. So we are, um, pleased to be able to, um, shift that over. So again, just one more plug. We hope that you join us, um, next week, January twenty-fifth, um, for, um, a really a deep dive into, um, the implementation basics, uh, what it'll look like for a scholar, um, and, um, how we're providing tons of support around the process. And I think that that is it. And again, just a reminder, it begins officially the Tuesday that we return back from spring break. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Creden. On one of the slides, you, um, pointed out that Yonder did some research saying that cellphones were the cause of the students' depression and anxiety. Did they cite the could-be? I could think of a lot of other reasons. Um, I, I'm not on board with this, but I respect your intentions and the school district's, um, wanting to go through with this. I voted no against this tonight. Um, there was a time when I would have, um, definitely felt that was a good idea way back when I was teaching, but too much has happened in the long run. And I think, I wonder if removing that lifeline from their parents, um, or the people that they need after having two years in seclusion could cause more depression and definitely anxiety. I'm not a psychologist, but I, I don't know, I've done my share of psych courses and I'm just feeling, not feeling it, but I, I just wanted to ask you if you knew where they got their research from.
You know, um, we absolutely are, you know, leaning in on the research that's already been done, but I think what we're amplifying more is what we are actually seeing with our community and our scholars and the impact that phones and social media access are having on our young people. And so we are fully committed to, as we communicated with families, we want a lot of feedback along the way. Um, we're gonna do it for, from now until the end of the school year, and we're gonna take a long, hard look at it. What were the implications? Did we see a reduction in referrals to, um, you know, mental health needs and resources? Did we see a reduction in needs for, um, you know, interventions and bullying situations, right? So we are going to really, instead of relying on what worked or didn't work in other places, there's, you know, all sorts of pieces out there, right? For every piece of research that, you know, supports it, you could certainly find a piece of research that doesn't. So instead of doing that, we're really digging into our own young people and what we see here and impact daily. And certainly your, um, concern about, um, the anxiety and, and, you know, to use or what's the lifeline, something we've been giving a lot of thought about and paying close attention to. And during the full presentation that we do with families, we talk about how we are prepared to address all of that. Um, and I'll tell you that we have incredible partners in our families. In just the four sessions that we've had, um, we've had some really unique, um, support in problem-solving for things. So it's been really great to learn from our families, too. So thank you for those comments.
You're welcome. I have one more question. Um, oh, sorry, mister. Do you wanna go first?
You wanna finish?
Mine was quick. It was just, I wanted to know how, I saw the number, it was around forty-five thousand for, um, what we were voting on tonight, which I voted no on for those pouches. But how much of the American Rescue Fund money in addition to that? Or is that the total?
The total cost for the year and a half, um, we have access to it for a year and a half, is forty-six thousand three hundred.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I remember, uh, not too long ago, seeing a caricature in the, one of the local newspapers or, or maybe it wasn't on social media, that if the Titanic were to sink today, all the people floating in the water or in the lifeboats will be taking pictures with their cellphone. And, 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 and the moral of the story is that we've, we reached a point that we lost focus of what matters. So with respect to bringing the kids back to focus, I think in that aspect, I support the policy. Now, there've been some concerns that, and I know you've heard them, that parents have reached, what if it's an emergency situation? I don't even wanna go into specifics, it was just terrible, but, and we've had many tragedies where the cellphones were the last way people were able to communicate. Uh, the Pulse nightclub in Florida and, and some schools. So, um, is that something, uh, number one, you're gonna address as far as the district's plan to address those concerns? And then number two, have we been working with law enforcement, with our stakeholders, to address those concerns? Because I think every parent, even those that are, that may differ on the issue, and they might have that concern, and I think it's important that we address.
Thank you for, um, you know, asking those questions, 'cause I think it's important for me to amplify the variety of ways that our families and community partners get opportunities to have voice on our decision-making. Um, although not explicitly, Yonder the tool was not explicitly called out, we engaged in a lengthy strategic planning process, as you know, all of, um, last year. And the topic of cellphones, disengagement, um, and issues related to cellphone use was a large part of the discussion and was something that not only our, um, partners inside the four walls of our schools, but our partners outside were asking us to, you know, take a try at solving for it. So, um, that is one of the ways that we took community and our partners' voices into consideration. The other ways are through the members of our community that sit on our Code of Conduct Committee and members of the board, right? They have voice in that. The other way is our district's safety team, and we have community members on that. The other way is through our community groups that we're consistently meeting with on a regular basis. Um, as well as, um, I meet monthly with our PTO boards, who represent their communities from each of those buildings. So lots of places where there is voice around the problems that we are, um, you know, trying to solve for. Um, again, the, the presentation that, um, I get the opportunity to join the incredible high school team on, um, provides a lot of detail. But we have absolutely heard parents in terms of in-the-classroom emergencies, and we have come up with, we think, two really, um, practical solutions that close the gap between the parents' concern and our implementation of, um, the tools. So again, I encourage families to sign on, send us an email. Um, we will meet with you one-to-one, we'll meet with you in a small group, we'll do a virtual meeting with you on your own if you can attend that night. Um, we just want to have an opportunity to have a two-way conversation about it, so please reach out to us. We're to the point in the presentation where, Mr. Smith, um, we are glad to welcome you here to provide us with our, um, three-year projection, um, and the state of the state financially. It's always good to have you. And you came tonight on not such a bad weather night, so we're glad for that. We're glad for that.
Well, thank you, everyone, and, um, I always look forward to meeting with this board. Um, I was thinking on my way down, I think this is the seventeenth year I've done this, and it's been, uh, so rewarding on my part to see how the district has progressed. Um, we were behind the eight ball that, I can remember those first four or five years where we had long discussions about how we're gonna strategize out of the financial condition the district was in. The, the problems with inequitable, um, foundation aid, uh, which, which was always worked against this district. And where we are, uh, in the past five years, especially, where this board is now able to focus not, not being tied to the numbers, but actually have a vision of where you wanna go and the results of that vision and a lot of hard work, um, and lobbying to try to get, uh, what was promised to this district here, um, it, it, it came. And basically now this year, um, I told Mike, the presentation this year will probably be quite short because there's not a lot of bad news, there's some cautionary news that we've gotta be aware of as you develop the, like, the budgets for the next two to three years out. But this year and last year were those years where, um, you know, I, sometimes I seemed, I felt like I was Dr. Death when I came here and trying to explain what you were, uh, up against. But, um, what I, I, I'd like to say this year, again, the, this is the last year that that, that compact that the state had made with this district was actually, um, realized and came through. The foundation aid, this will be the last year of the big, there was a three-year phase in of the foundation aid. And this year, um, the foundation aid will be fully funded. This will be the last of the payments, which in the district's case, and as we knew, you were being vastly short-changed under the foundation aid formulas. This year, um, the Middletown City School District will see an estimated twenty-eight million, seven-hundred-and-five-thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars, or a nineteen-point-four-three percent increase in state aid funding from about a hundred-and-fifty-million, um, two-two-two last year. So basically, and it'll be about a hundred-and-seventy-eight-million-nine-twenty-eight from all, aid from all sources. Foundation aid itself is the major contributor, and I'm on, I'm on page two if you wanna, uh, follow along, and I'll, I'll try to call the pages out as I, as I take excerpts, uh, from the report. Um, but, um, the all-important foundation aid will increase from a hundred-and-ten-million-one-twenty to a hundred-and-forty-million-nine-nine-five, a twenty-eight percent increase. So, and that's the last year. So when we went through that ten-year period of saying, "Middletown's being short-changed, Middletown's being short-changed," this really comes into focus how short-changed the district was over the years. So this was a significant movement on the state legislature's part. The next goal for the next five years will be now to get inside that state formula aid the way it's computed and making sure that changes are made to the ways the computations are done. And, um, on page, uh, three, um, on the third paragraph down, "The agreement to fully fund foundation aid is a major milestone. At the same time, it should be noted that going forward, the two-thousand-seven original foundation aid formula that was developed to distribute state funding in an equitable way by considering each school district's wealth and student need should be updated. The current aid formula does not measure significant changes in community demographics that have occurred, occurred over the last fifteen years." Middletown's a, a classic example of that. The growth you've seen in the, uh, district population, your assessed value, the makeup of your student body, think of where, how that has changed over the last fifteen years. Um, and the state aid formulas are stuck back in time. So it's really time that this formula be looked at closely, and it's gonna be a struggle. I mean, this, why I say five years? This will not be done easily, um, but, um, it, it's gotta be done as a necessity. For example, two-thousand census data is used to, in the current formula, and newer, better data is still, is available, readily available, but it's not being used. Um, so that, I think, is the next focus for school boards, superintendents, um, business officials, to try to bring this to light to the public and bring this before the state legislature. And it's boring, these, I mean, this is, it's, it's, this is not exciting stuff to get inside these formulas, but the more we understand them and the more the boards, school boards, understand where some of those weaknesses and flaws are, and you can advocate for them, um, I think that's our next challenge. On page four, um, like I say, this year and the, and the year before, were unprecedented gains for the district as far as financially. Um, and as I've, I've titled the middle here, "Good times are here for at least another year, but what happens after that?" Over, and over the past two years, the state has enjoyed a strong recovery and a tremendous influx of federal funds, but economic growth is not expected to continue into two-thousand-twenty-three and perhaps the first part of two-thousand-twenty-four. One major concern is that the current supply chain problems, coupled with the highest inflation rates seen in more than forty years, the war in Ukraine, and strained China relations, which we don't know where they're going, um, but there's that, such an interesting dichotomy between how economically we're intertwined, but how, how philosophically and politically we have vastly different goals and objectives that could also, could potentially, and, and let's hope not, but could come to a flashpoint, um, if, if things continue, uh, without some major headways. If inflation continues and the interest rates continue to climb, which seems almost certain, significant segments of the state's economy could stagnate. Real estate and the financial industry chief among them, and the chance of a recession in two-thousand-three, perhaps mild, does seem to be almost certain. Um, I just, we've been in, um- I just, we've been in, and one of the ways you can predict a recession coming is an inverted yield curve, and basically that's where short-term rates are actually higher than long-term rates. The inversion that we're experiencing right now, and I've been in this business since 1977, the inversion that we're seeing now is the most severe I've seen since my time. So basically, I'm almost certain that there will be a recession, but this, this period of time is also different. It's not, for those of you that can remember back in the 1970s, right around Jimmy Carter's times, during that era where inflation was 12 and 14%, car loans were 12%, mortgages were 15, 16. That was, that was unique, it was partially caused by disruptions in the oil supply and the whole economy, and also we had a Fed that didn't act, they were trying to fight inflation, but when they saw, when they saw positive outcomes, they, they went back again, and then they, they would catch up again, and they'd go back again. We were in about 10 years of an inflationary environment. I got to hand it to this Fed, I don't think they're going to do that. I think they're aware that they could slow the economy down, and they're, I think they're willing to take that gamble in that they know they've got to, because they can remember what was happening back in those years too. So we've got to be able to, to cool the economy down, the amount of money that flowed through the series of federal funds being distributed to individuals, governments, you know, just their own, their own foundations. It stimulated the economy, it overheated it, and the Fed, if you want to criticize them, I don't think they acted fast enough, and when the interest rates that we saw on, on borrowings just a year and a half ago were the lowest I've ever seen in my life. I mean, we were doing 10-year stuff at less than a 1% interest. Then, so they've shifted gears, they're trying to tamp it down, and it's, and I don't think they'll stop until they feel that they've, they've got control again. They want to see a 2% inflation rate. I, I don't think that'll happen for a very long time, but even if we could get down to three and a half or four in the inflation rate versus 8.5, 8.6, they've really done a heck of a job. But what that means for the state coffers is that we're not going to see the kind of money that we've seen the last couple of years. So for the board, you have an opportunity now, you're, you're coming from, 17 years ago, we were playing catch-up. Now you guys are from a position of, of power. You have the funds to determine your future, but keep in mind, we're going to, don't eat all the seed corn. We're really going to need the ability, I think you've got a couple, there will be a couple of two to three, maybe four years of kind of tough times again. We're going to be back, we're going to be back in, you know, that, those 2000, won't be 2001 time, but maybe 2005, 2006, where it was a struggle every year to even get any kind of aid increases. You, as a board, have gotten yourselves in a position where you can strategize and plan on that. Working within the constraints that you have to work with under not the ability to carry fund balances that should be at levels, you know, unencumbered, unencumbered fund balances that you should be able to have, you're limited by the state, no more than, you know, 4%. It's not, that's not what I do for any of our other municipalities. I feel a weak municipality should have a fund balance of at least 15% unencumbered. A strong, our goal is 25% of unencumbered fund balance. Schools are a little different than municipalities because there are increases given to schools by the state. Politically, they're, that's going to happen. Historically, it's been whatever the governor said, the state legislature would give more. And so schools, they do get some outside support, so I could see a lower fund balance allowance, but in my mind, that should be at least 8 or 10% of unencumbered fund balance. That's another goal that I think school boards and business officials can be trying to strive for is having the ability to have unencumbered fund balance so when you need it, and we don't know when this is going to happen. Stock market could go bad and state retirement rates go crazy. You know, we've got the ability now to do retirement reserves, but then again, it's a struggle sometimes to be able to justify those when the comptroller comes in. Another concern, and the governor acknowledged this in her State of the State message, is the flight of higher-income individuals in the state that are leaving the state, and there's a general upstate, there is a general movement out of state on a wide basis, but many of them are the people that can afford to make those economic decisions that they're going to leave the state, they can work remotely or whatever. So you're losing a large part of your wealthier state population. And on page five, I bring this up because this is a concern, and it's another thing that the state legislature's, legislature is going to have to address. The personal income taxes were increased in fiscal year 2021, '22 on the high-wage earners in the state. Making the state's reliance on high-income individuals even higher. It's worth noting that higher, higher income tax rates affect less than 1% of all the taxpayers, but those impacted pay over 30% of the tax liability. Concerns abound regarding a combined state, federal, and New York City income tax range in the area of 54% of income earned. Now, there are ways of sheltering income and that sort of thing, but there, there's probably a point where people will say enough is enough, and they'll make states like Florida, Texas, and Tennessee their homes, which will be much more attractive, not only for existing New York State executives, but also in attracting high-paid new talent to the state who may well demand businesses open offices in more tax-friendly areas so they will not have to move to New York State, especially among young professionals that do not have children, to keep them tied to home and can raise their new families elsewhere less expensively. I hear this from engineering firms. Many engineering firms here have expanded in New York State. They've expanded to South Carolina, North Carolina, Tennessee, Florida, Texas, and they're doing it, they, they're merging and expanding as a recruiting tool to get the younger talent, because they can't bring them into New York State because of this resistance to the, to the higher tax rate. They can be in California, and they can actually earn 20, 20-some percent more than what they would in New York State just by avoiding the state income tax. So this is a, this is a storm cloud on the horizon. We don't know, it's, this has really accelerated as a result of COVID. We don't know if some of these people are coming back. That's yet to be determined, but since the higher tax rates and COVID went into effect, many of those who moved out of New York State were among the 65,000 New Yorkers who paid 51% of the personal income tax. The top 1% of New York City residents supported a combined $133.3 billion in income in 2018. They paid $4.9 billion in local income taxes, making the 42.5% of the total income tax collected by the city of New York. Between 2010 and 2020, New York's share of the nation's millionaire earners dropped from nearly 13% to just under 9%, the lowest level on record. This is a concern. If, if, if you kill the golden goose, how are we going to be able to afford education, which is one of the primary drivers in the state budget, and the other big driver that's got to get under control, and we're starting to hear about this on a national level, is Medicaid and Medicare? That program is, is galloping, and I do touch on that here, I don't want to spend your time, but I did touch on this problem here. It's, that is another huge driver of, of taking available funds and sucking it into an area that's mandated, so you're not going to have a lot of discretion. So there are some concerns, and like I say, that you have the ability to address and meet those concerns on your terms as a board. So you have an influx, but like I say, you may want to, you know, consider somewhat of a tax, not use, you know, not using a full tax increase that you'd be entitled to, but pump the brakes, don't just take it away. The other thing we got to be concerned about is the tax cap. If you don't take the two, and we're in an inflationary environment for the next four years where four and a half is going to be a good inflation rate, you're going to be behind the eight ball. So, and if you don't take the full two, you can't make that up again. If, if you forego a half, you've lost that half, and it ripples, it'll ripple in the future. So, so be prudent, be aware of that tax cap trap, and that's another thing where there are years you haven't even been able to do 2%, depending on what was happening with inflation. So there has to be some discussion in the state of at least solidifying 2% a year, because I think the state's got finally understanding that if they're going to hold you to two, inflation's four and a half, you still have to provide an education, that money's going to have to be made up somewhere, and it's going to have to be made up by the state. So it's in their own, a lot of these proposals, being able to have unencumbered fund balance, being able to at least do two and, you know, negotiate some flat percentage every year, it will work for the state too. They've got to see that would be in their benefit, because they're going to have to come up with that money one way or another. When you do a tax cap, you, you're saying, "We're going to have another funding source." The state, as one of its funding sources, is legalizing marijuana and mobile sports betting. They tried, remember, we tried casinos, they hadn't moved the, casinos didn't work out so well, didn't bring in a heck of a lot of money, but mobile sports betting, that brought in money. And if the Bills can make the Super Bowl, we might have a heck of a lot of money coming in. But in, in the report, I talk about what we've seen with mobile sports betting so far. It's not the end-all answer, but it brought in over $990 million, and it's a year, in the first year. And we're not as sophisticated in the sports betting arena as some of the other states are. Jersey's a lot more liberal in, in what they can do through mobile sports betting. That has got the real potential of, of being a support aid for education. That money is supposed to be dedicated to education, support for gambling, you know, habits, for gambling habits, and there's one other, one other leg to the stool that's, it's in there, but mobile sports betting, and we don't know the effect of the marijuana, we don't know, but next year, I think we're going to have a fairly good idea of, of some indication of what that may bring to the state in revenue too. Health, health problems there, and again, that'll be on the schools, could be, because we see, you know, with alcohol, it, you're not supposed to have it, but it, it becomes a problem when the schools, this marijuana, by being so widely available, will probably have pressures on the school too, and that'll result in increased costs to try to deal with that. But I, I just want to say that the progress this board has made is, is, you're all to be, you and your successors are, will be asked to be able to handle that. Those that came before your predecessors, they should be congratulated for the focus they've done and how your boards come together. I think, Mr. Perano, you would, you would know, the, the difference in the tones and the, the way the boards interact, it's, it's, it's a different, different environment here. One thing I wanted to bring up is the strategy Mike has been doing as far as paying cash for his capital projects. When you look in the appendices, you'll notice that the amount of building aid we're bringing in versus the local cost share impacts. By paying that cash, you've got like, each year, you've got debt service of, you know, over $8.5 million. The cost to the district most years is less than $500,000. So you're getting all that state aid in because the way Mike and Betsy before him strategized on using available funds to pay cash, it brought in a stable revenue stream. You know, back when we were talking about those problems with the state playing with state formulas and state aid and scraping, they've never touched building aid because they know they can, because we borrow full faith and credit pledge on those bonds. So when we set up that revenue stream, that's the one that doesn't get touched. So you guys have kind of insulated yourself long-term, this is for like 20-some years, you've set yourself up with a stable revenue stream there. Now, by 2027, there's going to be a fall-off in your debt service. With the tax cap, you want to keep your capital outlays, like that's your foundation, don't let that slip, don't let the foundation fall, because then you got to do a tax increase to get it back up again. Keep it steady, and that's what we've been doing, and so I think Mike's already got some ideas of how to fill that gap with future capital projects, and having so much, I mean, just roofs to keep up with them, keep on top of your building condition surveys and keep planning ahead. Takes at least, even if it's a simple project, there's at least three years of lead time before you're ready to, to go out and borrow. So you, you start planning early and strategizing on when the debt falls off, what you're going to replace it with, and the board getting consensus of, is this, I, is this kind of a, a roof and foundation type, or is our next project going to be expanding educational opportunities, you know, where do we go? So the board is a group, as you're doing your planning, think about capital plans, you don't have to act right away on it, but starting to build consensus of, by '27, that means by '25, or maybe even '24, you would start being a planning, in the planning process to figure out where, what you want to do when that falls off in '27. So that's a, it's actually a, like I say, it's, it's a pleasure to be here this year, and next year, we'll, we'll deal with whatever comes, we just don't know what's going to come right now. I, I don't think we've ever seen, you know, it's, oh yeah, this is bad, but then, oh yeah, actually, we're doing better in the manufacturing section domestically than we've done for years, and we're starting to build our domestic production back up again. It's, and we've got, we've got unemployment at its lowest rate, but we need the jobs, we can't fill the jobs, so I don't- So I don't, I think economists are completely baffled, too. I don't think we have a historical norm we can point to here. So like I say, you're in a position to kind of determine your destiny. So as you go through the deliberations, and when I do this multi-year budgeting, it's not, I'm not sitting here and saying, well, your fund balance went up by so much from the three years before. I'm trying to give you guys an overview of the environment you'll be working in as you start developing the budget. Thank you for your time, and again, I think you guys are really to be commended.
Yes, this one.
Sure.
First, as I say every year, I always look forward to your presentation, and I think you struck on three very important points. Number one, the taxpayers of the state of New York are not ATM machines. I think the good folks at Albany have to realize that we need more taxpayers, not higher tax burden. Otherwise, I-84 West and I-95 South will be, continue to be in the eyes of many gateway to freedom as opposed to having New York as the state where the sky is the limit. Number one. Number two, I think you were right on track on the issue with respect to foundation aid. And I'm very proud of the fact that our district or our fair funding committee worked very hard. We went to the hearings of the education committee. We invited the state chair, chairwoman mayor for the state senate and the other elected officials to get foundation aid, restoring those numbers speak to themselves. And I do agree with what you said with respect to keeping our reserve funds strong. And of course, yes, we have a great genius and magnificent person, the person of Mike Tuttle, who has a financial expert helped us keep us on the right track. Question now. You mentioned something I continue to raise again. Our foundation aid, when the Democrat, it's based a large part, I believe, in the 2000 census as opposed to 2020.
20 or American Community Survey that does an update every five years to give you more accurate information.
So this is Europe, and Middletown's changed a lot since 20, the year 2000. In fact, the kid's born in the year 2000, already graduated high school. So do you think that's hurting us or benefits us?
I have a hunch that a revised formula would tend to favor Middletown's situation. English as a second language should be in there as part of the criteria. Income levels, that sort of thing, that I have a hunch that if we updated this, we would probably see that it would be a formula that continues to be favorable to Middletown. And again, there's so many moving parts there. Once you raise the hood, you don't know where to start, but, yeah, yeah. And like I say, that's going to be a struggle. And because of that taxes, especially even real property taxes, Long Island school districts could be doing, you know, I mean, they're wealthy and that sort of thing. Their aid ratios are much lower, and the real property tax burden is significant in that there's another, their burden, there is a burden, even though we would like to have that burden perhaps, but be in their situation. But I have some of my associates tell their kids on Long Island, the kids are saying, well, Mom, I want to come back, you know, come home, and I'll stay with you until I can find a job. And they're telling them, no, don't come home. You don't have a bed here anymore. It's my sole room, and don't think about coming back. That's, I mean, that's where that's getting in some of these areas. So it's a matter of, there's no right or wrong, because these decisions are made by people that, they see that as a way of solving problems in their districts. But they have to be aware of the whole situation. Up in our area, with the changes in the minimum wage and 40 hours for farm laborers, then you have to pay time and a half. We're already feeling the shift. Farmers are now turning what was a marginal farmland into solar fields because they're not going to be able to get the workers, because the workers don't want to work just 40 hours. They're motivated, and when you have, when you're out there cutting cabbage or harvesting onions or carrots or tomatoes, you can't, 40 hours, well, time to go home, folks. I mean, what's happening, we're already seeing it. Farmers are shifting what they're going to be growing to less obtrusive. They're going to go to soybeans, corn, that sort of thing. They're not going to grow the vegetables. They can't compete with the minimum wage and the 40-hour work week. So we're going to see a lot more solar farms upstate, that's for sure, and we already are. And the other thing that we've got to talk about here, and I should have, Mike, was electric, gas, and going to, converting to electric buses. That's going to start hitting probably, seriously, three, four, five years out, because you're probably going to want to hold back and watch how this whole thing unravels. Because you down here, especially the way the rates have gone up, I think a lot of it's got to do with decommissioning Indian Point Nuclear. But the bills have gone up, the tax bills. I'm working with a lot of wastewater treatment plants, and their bills have doubled in the last year and a half. We're having to do slower rate increases to keep up. And I don't see that, if we're going to start loading that grid with more and more electric vehicles, how are we going to cope with that other than more rate increases? If they're going to outlaw gas heating and we're all going to electric, that was never cheaper to begin with, but now it's really going to be expensive. That is your more long-term horizon. We'll probably start talking about that, I would think, probably by, in two school years, that will be part of this presentation, I'm sure, of how we're going to address that. But we're already seeing the increases, and you'll notice in our assumptions for expenditure increases, we're going 66% for electric as a jump. And then we're smoothing it out to four and a half per year after that, because we don't know where they're going. But that is another thing on the horizon. The schools, even though you guys contract with a private company, they're going to have to meet the mandates. And it ripples. You can't even put these electric buses on the bus lifts that we're using now. They're all going to have to be converted. So this thing will ripple. And I don't know where that one's going, but that's going to be a big one. But it's not, I would, I would, hold your powder, sit back, maybe dabble with one or two and see how they work, you know, working with your contractor, starting to see what the impacts are. But I wouldn't be one to be, I wouldn't want to be the one that's going out there and running the ramparts on this yet.
I think it goes to the whole idea of the end justify the means. I think the idea of cleaner electric buses, I'm all for it. But when you do it through mandates, we're going to end, there's no competition, there's no incentive, and we end up with a higher cost. I think, again, the good folks in Albany should look at the market solutions. Allow, give incentives to manufacturers, so you've got different competitors producing the vehicles so that each wants to outsmart the other, produce a better one at a lower cost. That's the way you should do things. But when the state files the old mandate approach, at the end, we end up paying a higher price.
It's interesting, the federal clean programs don't limit it just to electric. They allow natural gas, and they're even exploring hydrogen for their funding programs. New York State has said, no, it's electric. We're all in. So again, we'll have to see where that goes. That's a big one out there, but it's going to be, it's going to present itself fairly soon.
Yeah, if I might piggyback off of what Mr. Gomez and you were speaking about with the electrical vehicles. They might have mandates, but as soon as the taxpayers see that they're catching on fire, until they improve the technology, that's not going anywhere, first of all. And I do not blame our bus company for trying to follow what the mandates are. They're just trying to get ahead of the game, but it's the politicians who are pushing that. But I want to say you really gave a spot-on report. I disagree with you on a couple little things, but I mean, you are a financial genius. I just want to compliment you on this well, well-put-together report. I will say that with regard to the, there was something I wanted to bring up, but I should have written it down. I was taking a lot of notes. But with regard to the future for the capital improvements, I'm more of a saver myself, and even my own household, I believe in living within our means. I'd rather see us investing in the children rather than the capital projects, but I certainly could see where you were coming from, from a financial perspective. We need to invest especially in our differently abled children, and especially after the isolation they've had for the last couple of years, getting them back into that social, emotional growth and healing. But you really nailed it. I actually got a text message from someone who was watching you in the community, and they said you nailed it, so I thought you deserved that compliment. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
And what Mike has been able to do is been able to put you in a position where your tail is so small that you can use the other revenues for programming for the children. And by building that solid foundation, we should be able to keep that. In opportune times, we pay cash, or we pay a big down payment to bring the state aid and do revenue neutral so that we try to keep the building aid where you have historically been. So that builds your, that's your foundation. If we lose it, and you can't delay doing, you know, maintenance, if we lose it, then we've got to, then we've got to take away from the programming for the students to fix the roof. Thank you, everyone.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Smith. We appreciate you greatly. Thank you. We are going to move on to the Board of Education Committee reports. Buildings and grounds, Mr. John Perrino.
We had a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting before, right before the Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa break. And Bill Bartlett went over the various capital projects and the status of each project. He also covered certain design parameters of these projects, and we started to talk a little bit about the energy, the new possible geothermal project at Twin Towers. And I'll be speaking with Bill about possibly another Buildings and Grounds meeting very shortly. It's always good to have an update. Thank you, Bill, for that meeting. Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you. We have a policy committee. I don't know if Mrs. Blumenau is still with us. Is she?
Diversity.
Okay. Thank you. So moving on to the Diversity Committee, Mr. Mitchell Williams.
Yeah, we had our fourth meeting on January 9th. Our fifth and next meeting will be on February 6th. We have about 15 members that attend each month. Total number of those receive our emails and show interest in attending the Diversity Committee meetings are about 24. Three main SMART goals we accomplished were around community connections, the ELL Health Fair on December 12th at Mont Hagen. Number two, we had outreach to places of worship. That was November and December, donations and gifts. Thank you very much, Fox and Six West, for the donations to the churches. Also enhanced access and translation and interpretation services with video remote interpretation and implementation. Our SMART goals, we do SMART goals because we identify just areas of concerns, and then we set goals, and then we have objectives to accomplish those goals, like actions that we are going to take as a committee. So when Ms. Linda Rivera-Brett, she sends out the email, we able to see the accomplishments that we made. We have a green check for accomplishments that we made, yellow, things that are in progress, and a blue check for things that we're continuing, so that we're all on the same page. Three goals that we're working on are distributing of Diversity Committee survey, communicating and sharing a wealth of community resources. These are being translated and will be shared to our district-wide families to know many great supports available in our community. Additionally, communication, translation, and interpretation services at public meetings, BOE meetings, school events, and sporting events, et cetera. I'd just like to commend Ms. Linda Rivera-Brett on just the work that she is doing, as well as our interpreters at these meetings, as well as the community members, because the community members, they are coming out, we're having honest and great communication, and just, we're all working together just to, you know, just to engage, because we know we're all one team, and we can all win together. So please, if somebody wants to add on, we just gave you, I gave you the date of our next meeting, which is on February 6th, and it's held at Moda Suite, that's on 59 North Street, right here in Middletown. Thank you. 5:30, 5:30 to 6:30.
No, it was not. So we're going to move on to the Fair Funding Committee, Mr. Gomez.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess we'll amend the fair funding. Thank you, Mr. President. The Fair Funding Committee met this Tuesday. I thank all my, our members who are there, faithfully there. And we are looking at how we could improve the cost for our students who are special education needs, our school district cost. And we are going to be working on a resolution. Again, that will be sent to our respective elected officials in the state, addressing reimbursement rates, as well as the issue of the expenditures that the districts take upon themselves when we have to send children out of county because the services are only available out of county. Not only is it a significant financial cost to our district, but it's wear and tear on children. So many of our constituents out there know who commute. For many years, I used to commute to go to the Bronx Family Court, leave at night, come back at night. Imagine a five-year-old, six-year-old, or even a junior high school, high school student having to do that. I mean, I mean, there's no time to, I mean, it's a burnout. So hopefully, we could convince the stakeholders to bring some of these services closer to home, save the district's time, and our children the full benefit of the education they deserve.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. And that should be it as far as committees.
Can I just, I've got one thing.
Yep.
Thank you. I apologize. Mr. Gomez, I realized that, thank you to Dr. Williams, I neglected to answer your question about the relationships and the police force, right, law enforcement and their, yeah. And so I just wanted to comment really quickly on that, that we have been in conversations with them, and they are incredibly encouraged by this, and, you know, behind us 100%. And that's, you know, our partners in law enforcement, you know, across the area. Many agencies support us, but in particular, at the high school, it's the incredible team at the City Middletown Police Department, and they're really, you know, excited and encouraged by this. So thank you.
Respect to the cell phone.
Yes, yes, thank you. And thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Creedon. I just wanted to comment also on the Diversity Committee. I've been there with Mitchell Williams and Mrs. Brett, and they're doing a great job reaching out to the community and making the community feel welcome, and, you know, creating a nice space for giving information, receiving information. So I just wanted to commend them on that. And now we are moving on to Board Member Roundtable. I would like to begin with Mrs. Houston.
Thank you, President Williams. I have to say that in a system that has oppressive rules, we don't build the trust, or if we treat children as if we don't trust them from the get-go, I think there's a lot of emotional damage that can take place when our children are already hurting because of the two years of isolation they spent during the pandemic. I come from that point of view. I love our police. This is not a knock on them. They are fabulous. Even in my own local emergencies, when I've had them, they've been great. I just... I just am concerned that if we only send the message to our students that we don't trust them, we hurt them in the long run and we failed to build trust. I, I think there's a lot of oppression going on in our society in the name of fear. Fear instead of confidence that things will work out all right and, and in the name of safety. So anyway, I'm going to switch gears here. That's just my, my two cents. It's not specific to just the cell phone policy. It's specific to many of the policies that I see. I, I know that we talked about the prison pipeline many, many months ago, maybe about a year ago. And I just, I don't feel good about the lack of trust. And I understand we have issues. They have to be corrected. And I understand that that may require tough love in the beginning, but I'm not seeing that ease up and I don't think it's going to based on our conversations that you and I have had. So as for the truth, the truth or situation at hand is what it is. The truth has no agenda. It's not about how we spin it as positive, not sunshine, rainbows, unicorns with sprinkles or something horrible. But the truth is the truth. It's based on facts. And our lives begin and end the day we become silent about things that matter. Does anybody know who said that? I'll repeat it. That our lives begin and end the day we become silent about things that matter. That was Dr. King, Dr. Reverend, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. You know what else he said? The time is always right to do what is right. And I'll close with this. And I'm not saying this with any specific thing, but I'm a realist. I don't sugarcoat with sprinkles on top. If something's great, I do say it's great. But I'm an honest person and evil triumphs when good men do nothing. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Houston. We'll move it over to Mr. Gomez.
I just want to express my appreciation to the City of Middletown Police Department. Last, earlier this week, there was an incident where I believe there was some shots fired in the, in the, or the, in the second ward area. And the police department was in contact with our school district. They responded. They had, they were going, going through the different homes, making sure everybody was safe. And I do appreciate that. I thank Chief Wuanshu and Mayor DiStefano for their commitment in the, in the Middletown, City of Middletown for keeping us safe and working in partnership with our school district to keep our children safe. And I also would express my appreciation to Mrs. Creedon, who immediately sent out a letter to notify the parents because I know presidential student session when this happened. And that we're very happy that we, for our community leadership, our district leadership for keeping us informed.
Thank you, Gomez. Mr. Gomez, Mr. Mitchell Williams?
I want to start off by just thanking Superintendent Creedon for creating the forums for the dialogues that she's created. We have one forum as far as where people could come and address the board, which is one forum, but then she created as well the Listen and Learn, as well as the Talk About it Tuesdays for the different things that people have concerns with, and then we have a dialogue about it. And I, and I think that that is excellent because that's what it's about. It's about healthy communication. The, the thing of it is, is sometimes we might disagree. Disagreeing is not synonymous with disrespect or being disregarded. We have to understand that. Just because we disagree, that's okay. I believe most of the time, we are on the same page with the what as far as trying to get things better, but sometimes we might disagree on the how. And that's where the wonderful process of voting come in and different things like that. And we just do our best. So I just, I'm just so grateful for the forums. And I'm also grateful for the people who are utilizing the forums, you know, as far as giving us calls and emails and coming to these forums and verbalizing their thoughts, their opinions on what's going on to give us more things to think about so that we could come up with the best solution that we think we have. Because that's what we're doing. We're just crunching data and getting information to try to do the best thing that we can do for this district, for the kids, for the family members, because this is our home. So I'm just excited about these dialogues that we are having. And I want us to continue to have these dialogues, even if it's a difficult conversation. We can't be fearful of the difficult conversation. We need to have the difficult conversation, you know. So it, it, let's just continue with doing that and continue to move forward. And it's very exciting to me. And once again, I commend you for creating these forums. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. John Perino?
Thank you, President Williams. Bit of good news about our NJOTC unit. And I, I think I, there's some photos that Chief Slingerland sent over to us. At any rate, the unit has been invited by the area commander, area manager, Commander Miller, to participate and attend the Area Four Academic Athletic Drill Championship. It's going to be held January 28th, which is right around the corner. Great achievement from the, for our unit because not every unit was invited. And if we do well on that, they could be invited to the nationals, which are being held in Pensacola, Florida in the spring. So I know we all wish them the best. They're a group of very, very dedicated young, young men and women. So thank you, President Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. And I'm up. I just wanted to touch back on, even though holidays have come and gone, we had a toy drive at my business. I think this is the fourth or fifth year doing this. And it was amazing. Once again, we exceeded, I think, over 650 gifts. Last year was 500 and this year was amazing. I would like to acknowledge and thank Middletown Police Department, the City of Middletown, the Middletown School District. Many of you in this room participated and donated and it was amazing. We were able to reach out to churches, daycares. Our last stop is actually Garnet Health. This week, there was a disconnect with the administration there. So that's going to be our last stop. And I think we're dropping off about 150 gifts there. So it was such a good feeling. We had a gift wrapping event where some district members came out, community members came out. And I just wanted to thank everybody so much. It was very heartwarming and heartfelt that every year this, this comes together and gets bigger and bigger. And that's what I got. Thank you.
President Williams, I'd just like to say you did a nice job this evening.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I second that.
Thank you.
I concur.
And now we are going to the adjournment part of this meeting. I need a motion to adjourn. And a second. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Everyone, have a good evening.